Okey doke.
Well, I don't think we can do either.
No, no, but.
Oh, do we have a quorum for?
Dennison, myself, and Simcock, and two of the three.
Dennison's not here.
Oh, so we can't even do the.
But two of the three are here, we can.
No, we need three.
All three?
Well, for this one, yeah.
It's majority, majority in attendance.
Oh, but we can't.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we can do both minutes?
Oh.
Or just the.
If there's, if there's.
Why can't we do it last week then? Tom and I were both here. Right?
Is that what happened last?
Was it, it was Alex, is it?
Well, I'll, I'll defer to Alex then, there must be some.
He wanted, he seemed to want three. I don't know.
Three, go to like twenty thirty-five before we get to prove this thing.
They have to show up again, I know.
Oh, there was, there was four last time, so two wouldn't be a majority of four. It would have to be three.
Oh, I see, see, I got you, you.
So then, so then on this one, we could do it. There's three, two and, two out of the three are here.
Let's get it out of here then.
Yeah. It shouldn't be this complicated.
Right.
Okay, Apple, someone's Apple's killing.
Not the, not the other one, right?
Okay, you ready? All right. All right. Welcome, everyone, we'll call to order the meeting of the planning commissions. Thursday, November second meeting, we'll start with rule call.
Chair Dennison, Vice Chair Pefner.
Here.
Commissioner Moran, Simcock.
Here.
You.
Here.
To have a quorum to conduct business.
Wonderful, okay, so then we need to approve the agenda this evening.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, are there multiple?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, agenda, sorry.
Agenda.
Just the agenda, sorry.
I was thinking of minutes.
We'll, we'll get to the minutes in a second.
Thank you.
All right, and it passes. All right, approval of the minutes. So, do you want to clarify the, the vote for the minutes on who's?
Yes, so we, if we can get two votes, then we can pass the motion.
Okay, but it has to be two of the, who are in, in attendance, correct? Okay, and does anyone have, for the August seventeenth meeting? I was here, okay, anyone have any changes, additions, anyone?
Move to approval, as is.
A second.
Okay, so approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes unanimously for October nineteenth? Do we have, same poll, I believe.
I think I was there, so.
So we, does two of three count?
Yes, two, if, if the acting chair and Commissioner Simcock were there, then we have enough votes.
We do, because it's a majority of who's here, not four.
At that meeting, there were four, total.
But today, there's two of three.
Okay. But legal says we can pass out of two of three, okay, I have no changes then.
I have no changes, so I move to approve it as is.
Can I second my, the motion, or do it? I guess I'll second then.
Yeah.
All right. All right, very good, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and without abstention, and that gets that done, good, all right, so council liaison report, I see no one.
She's not here tonight.
Okay.
Watching on television.
Terrific, okay, coming in by. Airplane here, okay, so then the next is community input, this is a time when anybody who wants to say anything about something that is not on tonight's agenda, they get up and speak. Since we have light attendants, I'll leave a little latitude, does anybody want to come up to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, great, okay, then, moving right along. We will start with our first public hearing, six hundred Ramona Avenue. We have a presentation.
Staff has a presentation that will be delivered by Senior Planner Wolf.
Senior Planner, woo!
Oh, yes, congratulations, we have a new senior planner.
Thank you, Planning Manager Lynn.
And Planning Manager, congratulations to both, that means they're sticking around. Can't wait, go ahead.
And good evening, commissioners, tonight, the planning commission will be reviewing the design review permit for six hundred Ramona Avenue. Tonight, the applicant is requesting that the planning commission meet all the findings required to approve a design review permit for the construction of a two-story, three thousand one hundred seventeen square foot, single-family residence, which will require the demolition of all existing structures except for the foundation of the existing residence. For a two-story home at above three thousand square feet on this lot, it will require approval of a design review permit. The applicant is also requesting the commission find that the project be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to seque. Now, just to preface this, the scope of the work involves a project that staff feel has a potential to impact the character of the neighborhood. And through review of the applications submitted since June of twenty twenty-two, the project has realized several iterations and refinements resulting in the product being reviewed tonight. The findings highlighted on screen relate to the project's context within the neighborhood, for which the commission may want to keep in mind while reviewing this project. And just for reference, these are findings for design review permit number three, four, five, and eight, A through E, excepting B actually, where preservation is not applicable in this case. The project is located at six hundred Ramona Avenue. With a land use of residential low density, in a one-family residential R-one zone. The lot size is nine thousand four hundred ninety-four square feet with a fifty-foot width. It is within the vicinity of the British Home, and within the vicinity of the Goldberg Recreation Area. British Home is to its west, and Goldberg Park is to its east. Development pattern within the neighborhood is primarily long and narrow lots, developed of single-family residences, cited forward of center, emphasizing enjoyment of private open space. The narrowness of the lots result with narrow homes developed to the extent of setback limitations, and a trend of garages placed at the front of residences either front-loaded or side-loaded. Here's a more zoomed-in aerial photo of the project's location. On its east is an R-one double-wide lot, on its west is another R-one single-wide lot, and an R-one single-wide lot facing Sunnyside Avenue. That lot is newly developed, and it is just south of the Goldberg Park. And south and north are also R-one single-wide lots. Now, here's an aerial photo facing, a view from north and kind of facing angled south. And so all of the photos you see on screen here are of the subject property, on the bottom of the slide are photos taken at the front of the property. And on the top of the slide are photos taken of the rear of the property. And in summary of the project data, this is a fully code-compliant project. From existing to propose, the project makes changes to lot coverage, building height, gross floor area, front yard setback, rear yard setback, and parking. The existing lot reflects the prevailing development patterns within the neighborhood, being a long and narrow lot with its residents cited slightly forward of center. The property takes access by a ten-foot wide driveway along the east side of the property, ending at a single-car garage, and meeting an open patio area. An oak tree with a trunk located on adjacent private property has a canopy encroaching onto the property, but does not interface with the extents of the proposed project. The property is also surrounded by a variety of fencing materials with block wall as a result of neighboring private property improvements. So just to demonstrate, along the east and rear is where that block wall is located. Kind of pointed it out here on the slide, but there's also chain-link fencing, six-foot-tall vinyl fencing, six-foot-tall wood fencing, and then a forty-two foot, or forty-two-inch corral-type fencing. The project proposes the demolition of the existing residence, and detached one-car garage along with the extension of a driveway terminating at a new two-car garage, side-loaded, and a two-story, single-family residence reusing the existing building pad. The extended driveway follows the downslope, requiring a retaining wall along the west side of the extended driveway, in a location that approximately bisects the existing one-car garage. Then returns to meet the existing retaining wall that splits the backyard. The proposed residence would make minor expansion to the existing building footprint toward the rear and toward the front. Extending the front six feet forward from its current building line, while maintaining compliance with the front yard setback requirement. Other site improvements include the installation of a six-foot-wide vinyl fence. Surrounding the property except at the six-foot block wall. And that six-foot vinyl fence is to mesh the recently-installed six-foot fence along the rear of the property at one eighty-one South Sunnyside. So except for the chain-link fence that was at the rear of the property. All fencing to be installed would not replace the existing fencing, rather it would be added, abutting the existing fencing. And so here I've also dimensioned the rear property line and building line of the second floor, and that extent is one hundred twenty-one feet, six inches. The proposed project requires the full demolition of the existing residence except for the foundation. As a proposed, we'll incorporate a top plate height at the ground floor of nine feet, increased from the existing eight feet. As a result, the floor plan is completely reprogrammed from its original, relocating the kitchen to the southeast corner, incorporating a bedroom in its place. Reprogramming the existing northwest bedroom into a formal dining room, but retaining the family and living room areas. The proposed project also expands upon the existing footprint toward the front, expanding the family room and adding a front porch. And toward the rear, adding a semi-open patio and extension of the living room, for optional use as an outdoor dining space. Total area of the first floor is one thousand six hundred fourteen square feet. The second floor projects directly above a portion of the ground floor, stepping back throughout the west side, rear, and throughout a portion of the front, offering vertical articulation. The new second floor will include two bedrooms placed at the, at the north, and each with their own picture window of the mountain. A common full bathroom, laundry area, den, and a primary bedroom suite with picture windows facing the south and toward the backyard. The roof is consistently hipped throughout, at equal slopes. The semi-open patio space at the rear includes partial clay tile roof surrounding, the attached trellis structure in keeping with the proposed Mediterranean architectural style. The area, the total area of the proposed second floor is one thousand seventy-nine square feet. Section elevations reveal that the floor-to-ceiling heights on both proposed floors are kept minimal, at the ground floor it's nine feet, and at the second floor it's eight feet. Finished floors are at one continuous elevation for each floor level, and the finished floor of the ground, at its highest is approximately two feet above adjoining finished grade level. The building elevations illustrate the overall square shape of the building. Side elevations, the east on this screen, demonstrate the projection of a single-story element towards the rear and the front. At the east elevation, the center of the second floor is recessed fourteen inches from the building line. The first floor directly below includes a roof discontinuous from the ground floor roof, but matches an eve height and detailing. The east elevation also includes a belt course aligned to the rafters exposed below eaves, and continuously wraps to the front elevation and terminating at the interior corner where the front porch projects. Ventrification on each elevation is well-balanced, and notably, windows at the second floor are of smaller variety to mitigate impacts on privacy. And the opposite elevations here, west and south, continue that same, the same elements of design for Mediterranean style. Getting into the details here. Weave screeds, which are on the lower left of the slide here, will be installed at the base of exterior stucco to allow for the escape of moisture and circulation of air that will benefit the long-term durability of the stucco, and prevent water damage of the structural framing. Exposed eaves are ornamented with exposed rafters and fascia board that will provide a blend of contemporary and traditional Mediterranean features. Window and door frames will be further embellished with cast-stone sills, further adding interest on each elevation. A parapet is incorporated at the rear patio structure to resolve top roofline of the clay tile roofing as continued from and attached with the main building over the trellis. These details are consistent with the Mediterranean style, contribute to the high-quality construction of the residence, with care taken on each elevation to continue the detailing for an overall balanced design. Now on slide is a full east elevation, which includes the garage further to the south of the proposed project. And as you can see, it follows the natural grade, it is placed well below the finished floor of the residence. In the model renderings of the proposed project, elements of the Mediterranean style become most apparent through the use of building materials of warmer earth-toned colors. The first model rendering shown on screen is as viewed from the rear, as though standing tall from the rear yard of six twenty-four Ramona Avenue. This model render is as viewed from the front of the property slightly west. The model renders provide a better visualization of the use of materials, especially the details of the exposed rafters below eaves, and stone cast molding surrounding the venustration. Model render intends to highlight the material building elements, but does not accurately reflect the natural lighting, as a result. Realistically, the north side of the building will receive much more shading than is shown on screen. Also of note, and for the point of reference, the wall recess behind the front porch represents the building line of the current residence. At the east side, the facade projects one foot forward of the existing building line. The second story is in line with the front building line, and lastly, the front porch projects six feet forward from the existing building line. The roof is a one-piece S-shaped clay tiling from US Tile in a Newport blend color variety. Stucco is a seven-eighths inch smooth finish installed over two layers of water barrier and exterior sheathing. Stone veneer is Eldorado Stones mountain ledge design in Lexington Eastern variety, which is mortared and installed with a scratch coat over metal lath, water barrier, and sheathing. Windows are arched and square, placed strategically both to balance elevations and to be framed within architectural archways. All windows are Milgard fiberglass framed in a brown color, to complement the treatments of the exposed rafters below eaves. The front door will be a custom wrought iron and obscured glass material. The conceptual new landscape demonstrates the intent of the applicant to improve their front yard with warm and vibrant colored palette, plant palette, to complement the warm colors of the Mediterranean-style home. The final landscape plan will be reviewed for compliance with Sierra Madre Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance, to ensure that the landscape meets standards for water efficiency. Now moving on to neighbor context. Again, this is an aerial view from the north, this is facing slightly south. And on screen now are the photos of five ninety Ramona and six twenty-four Ramona, the immediately east and west neighbors. On the bottom of the slide are the photos of the front of the properties for those across the street from the subject. And on top are photos of the front of the property of those located on Manzanita Avenue. Directly behind the subject property. And as you can see, all are single-family residential developments, and a variety of single- and two-story buildings. But I'd also like to point out that just further beyond that three-hundred-foot radius scope for neighborhood analysis, and further down the street but within the same block, are these other properties, and although both these properties are within five hundred feet of the proposed project, they are outside. So, I'm highlighting them because they are of a similar design in terms of massing and architectural styling. And then we have a, a street elevation here for the neighboring properties. The project demonstrates compatibility with its neighbors through similar forms and materials being hipped roofs and tan stucco material. There, there is a distance measure here between the subject property and its neighbor immediately east, there is a seventeen-foot distance. And between the subject and its immediately west neighbor, there is a distance from second floors of thirty feet. And I also wanted to add this slide, this is a longitudinal crosslot from Ramona to Manzanita. And this demonstrates that there is an overall from second floor to building of the Manzanita Avenue property, approximately one hundred sixty-eight feet of distance, over a twelve-foot change in grade, that equates to about a seven percent grade here. In terms of analysis on floor areas, six-six-five Ramona Avenue, I just wanted to point that out, that was not in this list because it is outside the three-hundred-foot scope. But on the map, six-six-five Ramona Avenue is just west of number two on the map, and six-eight-seven Ramona is the fourth door down from number two. In terms of building size, represented as habitable area, is provided by the Los Angeles County Office of the Assessor, so this does not reflect gross floor area as termed by Sierra Madre Ordinance. And while the proposed project results with a building square foot slightly above the average and median of the top one-third of neighboring properties, it maintains compatibility as three of the properties within the top one-third are immediately, immediately adjacent and have similar building square footages and FARs. Moreover, an adjacent neighbor property is developed with two-story residence. Circling back to our findings, this is a summary to findings three, four, and five on screen. And to recap from the presentation, the site plan, floor plans, elevations, sections, and material samples together provide illustrative evidence meeting the findings for design review. In particular, for number three, the project utilizes the existing building footprint, thus its height, bulk, scale, and mass are compatible with its landform and surrounding neighborhood. For number four, the two-story Mediterranean style does not dominate the neighborhood, as there are other two-story Spanish-style homes in the neighborhood. For number five, the second floor is carefully placed, and meaningfully stepped back on the side elevations so as to be respectful to its immediate neighbors. Onto number eight, materials submitted demonstrate the project will exhibit exceptional design as demonstrated through high-quality building materials, custom project-specific details, minimum grading through reuse of its existing building pad, and sustainability through specialized building elements that preserve the exterior finishes, and through water-efficient choices in landscaping. I just also want to say that a full breadth of the findings is included in the staff report, as well as in the planning commission resolution. So tonight's planning commission resolution twenty-three dash seventeen is drafted by staff in recommendation to approve design review permit twenty-two dash ten. That meets all findings for, required for approval of a design review permit, and finds that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. The alternatives for planning commission tonight, planning commission may adopt that planning commission resolution as presented, that approves design review permit twenty-two dash ten, subject to conditions of approval. Planning commission may adopt the resolution with modifications. It may deny the request for design review permit, directing staff to prepare a resolution citing reasons and findings for denial, or continue the public hearing and provide direction to staff and the applicant. Staff is recommending approval of resolution twenty-three dash seventeen as presented. This concludes my presentation, and I'd also like to report that two comments were received via email and forwarded to the commission for their consideration. The applicant's representative from Mid-Centuries Engineering, who drafted and designed the proposal, is also here to answer questions, along with the applicant themselves. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff?
No questions.
No? Just, just to clarify, on finding five, the angle plane, in terms of the setback, was correct?
The, the project was fully below the angle plane.
Okay, I just, because one side goes up and I, I didn't do my own little, you know.
It wasn't highlighted, but it was.
Right.
Kind of lightly shown on elevations.
Just wanted to make it public.
I do have a question, did I read that, that's underground utilities, I'm sorry?
One of the conditions of approval is for underground of utilities.
Oh, that's it.
And so, there are a lot of above-ground utilities right now, especially power.
Thank you.
So, we've, we've clarified that with the applicant, is that, is just to drop the wire from the power pole and underground through trenching to the residence, rather than have that gooseneck that you see there today.
Okay, so that, that is part of the plan, I don't, we don't have to try and add that in, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Vice Chair, can we do the disclosure of ex parte?
Oh, yeah, that's, before we get, did anybody go by the property or talk with neighbors?
I did, I didn't talk to, no contact.
Yeah, drove by, did not talk to anybody.
Okay, and I did not drive by and obviously made no contact. Okay, very good, thank you. So, did the architect want to make a presentation, or supplemental presentation, or make some comments, or?
Good evening. Philas Jamal, I'm a Mid-Centuries Engineering, I'm a principal designer. First, I'd like to thank the staff for the presentation, but also for working with us for several months now to get this project to this point.
That's it?
Start your time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have your sound on, go ahead.
So, just thank you for the staff, and the owners are here as well, and they're very excited, we hope that we can gain your approval tonight. And we will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any specific?
Are you the designer on the project? Yes, sir. So, just a couple of questions, the window types in the front. Yes. Why the mashup of the two different types and stuff, what's the rationale? For, for the front porch, we want, we, we, the owners and we like the, the arch top for the, for the front porch, to emphasize the Mediterranean style. And we thought, I thought personally, that the arched window will fit well within the arched on the first floor. And to highlight the second floor, the pop-out on the left side, I thought the arched window will complement the first window on the first floor, since it's kind of popping out by itself. And you didn't want to overdo something that was too good, or? I'm sorry? So you only wanted to do those two then, not the others? Those are the main elements, I didn't want to make it too busy, but basically, those are the most visible, and then the second-floor arched window kind of complement the first floor, like you go and, I didn't want to have arched on the first floor and another arched on top of it, like the arch is like the end of the design per se. But the first-floor window, because it's, it's fitting under the arch of the front patio, front porch.
Commissioner, may I?
Yeah.
So, as I mentioned early on, this project went through several design iterations, and this was a direction from staff to incorporate both arched windows where it complemented archways, and include square windows to complement the square shape of the building, so this was a staff comment and response.
Okay. What is the den room on the upstairs, doesn't affect any of this, but just, I'm curious, what is the? But mostly it's really like small office, or eventually might be like a walk-in closet additional. additional walk-in closet, but it's too small to be a room on its own, like a bedroom.
Got it. And the existing foundation is a slab-on-grade?
It's raised foundation, it's raised floor.
Oh, it's a raised foundation?
It is.
I think your drawings are showing a slab-on-grade.
I don't know if those are exact drawings, but it should be raised floor.
So it's a stem wall, raised foundation with floor joists?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, yeah. Am I mistaken?
Yeah, raised floor. Yeah, only at the rear part that's raised, but for the most part, for the most part, it's level here. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that it's kind of half and half. Half of the house is on a slab, but then there was an addition in the back that was added at certain point, that's raised floor.
Okay, so it's a slab-on-grade then, okay.
Yes.
And engineering-wise, on an existing slab-on-grade, you're able to do a two-story?
We'll have to underpin the foundation. Yeah, there'll be underpinning for the foundation, yes.
I think that's all I have. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that brings us, anyone else in the office, audience that wants to speak to this project, for or against? Do you have three minutes or so? Come on up. Oh, yeah, two, there you go, thank you.
So my name is John Armstrong, I live at 601 Manzanita. The northwest corner of my property is the southeast corner of the 600 Ramona. I just have a couple of, I guess, questions and clarification based on looking at the package. The first question I had is I couldn't figure out, has there been a hydrology analysis or is that to be done, should this be approved? To be done? Thank you, okay.
That's something that usually building and safety will take care of during the drawing process, yeah.
So there'll be other speakers perhaps who address this more completely, but there is quite a grade there. And the, and there is an enormous oak tree, which was shown on the, on some of the things, which is just to the, slightly to the east of the southeast corner of 600. And that one has not, has been poorly maintained, or not maintained, since I've lived there, since 1977. And it could be impacted, and I could be impacted, if that tree were to somehow be overwatered, I'll say it that way. Anyway, hydrology is an issue, there's quite a, there's a steep drop-off there. And I guess the other, perhaps obvious point, but I'll ask it anyway, should there be a review, a subsequent review of this? Is it procedural that we would all be informed for another, would there be another meeting, and would be, would the local residents be informed of that meeting?
This is the meeting. This is the meeting.
If there were, if there were to be a review, I guess is my question?
Right, if it goes for, if there's some, yeah, if we put this to another meeting, there'll be other notice, yes, exactly.
So I will then stop at that. Thank you.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
So is your concern regarding the hydrology that some change is going to drive a bunch of water to that corner, is that your concern? What is the concern?
So I'm not a hydrologist, but there is quite, well, there is quite a gradient, as a 12-feet drop was mentioned.
Existing is what you're saying?
Existing, yeah. So if you add, if you add more material for which there is runoff, as opposed to landscaping, then there will be more runoff. And so I'm just drawing that to the attention of the system.
And your concern is it's going to go to that corner?
Well, it might, I mean, it's going to predominantly go south.
Right.
And there'll be some spreading, but, and I have no idea, you know, as I say, I'm not a hydrologist, that was why I was asking whether there was already a plan.
Thank you.
If I could just say a little something?
Go ahead.
I think, having gone through the process of permitting for a new residence and all those things, when you go through building and safety and go through all of the drawings and your, you know, structural calculations and all that, as part of that on your site, you're not going to be allowed to show that you're just going to drain everything off to somebody else's site. I mean, that's going to get mitigated. So I can understand your concern that, you know, is it going to make it worse and all those things, but typically, on a project where you're looking at the entire site, you're not allowed to take all of your water and just kind of spill it off into your neighbor, you know, and that's not going to be allowed in the city, you know, for, when you're checking the drawings on the slopes and all that, from your civil engineer and all of that. So I, I don't know if that's going to help you answer some of that question, but that's usually how it's done, so.
And there's no tree report because of where this, this is, this tree is not impacted, correct? I mean, there's no?
Public Works did review the plan preliminarily and did not require Arbor's report.
Okay, very good. Did you want to have to say, yeah, go ahead.
I may just give my feedback on that. The oak tree is not in our lot, it's on the neighbor's lot, the trunk of the tree. It's about maybe 15 feet from our property, from our fence, and there's a fence currently between our lot and the neighbor's lot where the tree is located. As far as the additional runoff, if we were to add one-story addition, like double the size, then I would understand the concern, but since, as we mentioned, the footprint of the house is pretty much the same as the existing, we're only adding about like 70 square feet or so, if I remember correctly, to the footprint of the first floor. So the additional square footage is technically on the second floor, and the driveway is in the same spot. The garage was one-car garage, now it's two-car garage, so I think that's very insignificant comparing to the size of the lot. Additional thing, there will be LID plants to treat the water, that's by code requirement, and we have already a planter designed in the back porch around the back patio that we have. There's raised planter that will catch all the water from the roof, basically, and it will be filtered in that to filter the water by code requirement, but also it will help mitigate the runoff on the site, which is naturally sloping to the back.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Next? Does anyone want to speak? Anyone else want to speak to this project? No? Oh, okay. Just give me a chance, since we have such a full audience, thank you. All right, well, all right, then I'll bring it back to the commission. Any questions, further questions or discussion for staff, or make some comments, or?
I don't really have many comments. I mean, I, the, was it the eastern side is pretty, is pretty kind of a flat-sided two-story. But, you know, I've seen so many lately with this shrunken second story to kind of offset everything and make it look a little bit different. I kind of, this one's kind of refreshing. To me, it's just a little different than a lot of the ones we've seen where they kind of try to set back all the sides of the second story, you know, six feet and everything. It's one side, it's the side where it doesn't look like it's going to have much impact with the neighbor, because it's farther from the house, and I believe there was a garage on that side, so. Yeah, it looks good to me. I mean, I have no qualms with it. I like that you're putting the electricity underground, that'll be great.
Good, thanks. You?
First, I think that the idea of building on an existing foundation intrigues me. I mean, I think it's the green thing to do, for sure. I overlaid the existing plan with your new proposed one on the first floor, and there's going to be a lot of cutting and, you know, moving some plumbing and all that stuff that's going to happen. I mean, I guess that's to be expected, but I would say, you know, kudos to you for at least utilizing the existing, because a lot of that, a lot of energy goes into the new concrete and all of that, so I think that is definitely a very green thing to do, so I appreciate that in that sense. I agree, I think that the decisions that were made regarding the driveway on one side and, you know, your 45-degree angle matches all of that, makes sense. I think architecture, I might have just done some things a little bit differently, but it's not my house, and, you know, if you like it, I can live with it. It's definitely a style, and I think you are utilizing the materials that will make it a nice place. So I think the moves that you've made make sense, and I can get, I can get behind that, so.
Really quickly, I just wanted to add, there was, just because we had the, like, the two email public comments, I wanted to address the one that was the neighbor to the rear. You know, this is two stories, it is also 120 feet from that rear line. We don't get that far very often, so I mean, between the rear of this house and the rear of the other house, would you show 161 feet or something, I think, like that? So it's, it's pretty far. I mean, and the second story in the rear is the master suite. I don't think a lot of people are going to stare out the window from the master suite, you know, towards, towards that lot, but I just wanted to say that so they knew it was addressed.
Yeah, good. My only comment says, this is an older development, this house was only built 20 years after the lot was subdivided, what, 1928, 1949? So it's been a long time for the neighborhood to be changed, and this is one of those unique neighborhoods where we have old and new together, and it's really hard to try and predict how to limit that, you know, everybody would probably like to, everybody to keep a one-story home and keep it kind of lowbrow, but it's, these are the realities I think we have with, that's going to, going forward with development, that people are going to demand two-story homes to put more room on it, and as opposed to a one-level 3,000-square-foot home, which probably might have been possible, but the alternative is then you spread it out across the property, and so in conserving what was there, I guess, I get more mileage out of a two-story on the existing foundation versus spreading it out and trying to get the square footage on one level. And it is a very narrow lot at 50 feet, so there's a lot of challenges there, but I mean, because, so otherwise I can make the findings as well, if someone wanted to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, sorry, design review permit 22-10, as-is.
I'll second.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay. Let's see, let me get to the next.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Sorry, a little technicality here. You're welcome. Bye, Scotty. Okay, that brings us to our second item, which is a discussion on our resolution 23-18 regarding the development for the McComber Cabin and conditions that govern it. So do we have a presentation?
Staff has a presentation.
Thank you.
So the next discussion item this evening before the planning commission is to discuss the proposed relocation of McComber Cabin. As you know, McComber Cabin, along with the Carter Barn, occupies the lot 18 of the Stone Gate subdivision. And depicted is the location of the structures, McComber Cabin being the one to the south, the smaller structure located at the southwest corner. The land use and zoning destination are Hillside and Hillside Residential. And looking from the street, this is the current condition of the McComber Cabin. Property owner reported that it has been a challenge to upkeep a structure that was constructed without a foundation. So the first document confirming the settlement of the rental is an 1873 map that noted the home stater's cabin on the property, constructed and occupied by George A. McComber. So due to the historical significance, a D restriction was recorded along with a mothball plan in 2010 for the developer to preserve the structure. The report from the Heritage Resources and Zappos Environmental stated that the cabin is likely constructed in two phases, with a small kitchen and a workspace, the fireplace being constructed first, and a sleeping and living quarter added later on. So that red line between the structures depicts the first part to the right was constructed first, and then later on adding on to the living quarter. So McComber Cabin is one of the oldest residents remaining of its type in the city. In order to preserve that, staff proposed that, an idea to reconstruct a replica of the cabin of its original front portion and relocate it to the Mount Wilson Trail Park. Mount Wilson Trail Park includes Lizzie's Trail and the Richardson House, and along with McComber Cabin, it will create a collection of museum at the park. City met with the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society, who is amenable to the concept, and the developer is willing to undertake the expense of the demolition, replica reconstruction, and the relocation. They also will need to amend the decoration, including the CCNR, to reflect the new plan for the McComber Cabin. So once the McComber Cabin is relocated to the new park, the responsibility will fall on the city and Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society to maintain the structure.
Sorry, Claire, I don't want to interrupt it, but the developer is willing to pay the fees to get it there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but after it's constructed and then in place, then we will have to take care of it.
Okay.
So as you all know, the site is at the corner of the Mount Wilson Trail and East Maramonte. The land used for the trail, well, Mount Wilson Trail Park is Civic and the City Park. The site contains two structures, the Richardson House and the Lizzie's Trail Inn. Both buildings were owned by the city and used as a museum by the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society. The Richardson House was constructed in 1879, and Lizzie's Trail Inn was moved here due to the construction of the water reservoir across the street that is to the west of the Mount Wilson Trail. And here is the proposed, schematic proposed site plan for the collection of the three... for the collection of the three museums. McComber Cabin being eighteen seventy-three, Lizzie's Trail, Richardson House being eighteen seventy-nine, and Lizzie's Trail eighteen ninety. And provided are the photos of the existing condition of the Richardson House and Lizzie's Trail Inn. And here's a closer look of the facade of the two. And you remember that we just designated Lizzie's Trail Inn this August as a historical landmark. And this is the proposed site for the relocation. There is an open space right east of the Richardson House, sandwiched in between the Turtle Park and the Richardson House. And here is the conceptual building pad that could be possible allocation for the McComber Cabin. Public Works were already evaluating the Italian stone pine tree right next to the sidewalk. Recently, it dropped a large limb, and it's on the list of removal for Public Works. So once that's removed, it will clear up the space, the open space for the relocation. So in order to proceed with the relocation, we have to review the documents that's in place. City Council approved a resolution in two thousand and five, subject to conditional approval of the vesting tentative track map. Later on in two thousand and seven, for the final map, City Council approved deferred improvement agreement, CCNR, and a fee agreement along with the final map resolution. So of all these, planning commission may recommend that the City Council enter into a development agreement for the McComber Cabin and amendment to the CCNR to include the McComber Cabin relocation plan. So before you this evening, the alternative is to approve the resolution or approve the resolution with modifications, deny the resolution, or continue the discussion. Staff recommended that the planning commission approve the resolution twenty-three dash eighteen, recommending the City Council approve a development agreement for McComber Cabin and the First Amendment to amend and restate the Declaration of Establishment of Conditions, Covenants, Eastments, and Restrictions for the Stone Gate as your moderate. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think my first question is, obviously, it's gonna be, we're moving it, but I keep hear the word reconstruct, because I, yeah, it's a hundred and fifty years old. So I know there's gonna be a problem with that. But, so we're gonna have, I mean, it's gonna be changed. We're gonna have, we're not gonna build it without a foundation this time, right? I mean, there's gonna be changes. Things in that house are going to, you know, the original are gonna be really different. I'm sure we have probably, you know, dimensional wood, so our walls aren't gonna be, you know, three and a half inches thick with siding on each side. They're gonna be some old funny, you know, size. And that's something I think when you, if you maybe, if you're looking at a door and, you know, the wall's this thick or it's this thick, it's not that same normal thick. It might be, it's taking away from, you know, like the original windows. Those are gonna be super, almost impossible to mimic, because the glass won't be the old-style glass, things like that. So I was just curious what has been, like, what the leniency and who is checking to see, ensure that these, you know, we don't end up with a wood box that's the same shape with sliding aluminum windows or something? I mean, you know, maybe not that far, but, you know, how far are we preserving the original? Because that, that's a concern to me.
Because there is an extreme where we could say, make it exactly the same.
Right, right, and maybe we don't.
I don't, I'm not going there, but I'm just saying, where is that line?
Where's the line and who's calling the line?
You can take a piece of lumber and cut it down to the exact size that it was before, and we, but I mean.
Right.
We're not saying that, but.
Right, I'm not saying you have to hand saw redwood and then cover it up with drywall or something. But, you know, again, like a smooth concrete slab floor, I don't know what the floor in that old cabin is. Is, I guess it's dirt, I don't, yeah. That's gonna be hard to recreate. I guess you could put a slab and put dirt on top of the slab. Yeah, I mean, so that's my concern, is that we don't, you know, ruin it.
Can I, I wanna just sort of tag on to that from the other side. What are we, has it been looked at, I assume, you know, more than just us have looked at it? And what's gonna be preserved? For instance, the rock for the fireplace? When they did Stone Gate, they took the gate pieces down, they marked all the rocks. I mean, this is a preservation project, so, you know, it's the kind of stuff that we expect, right? And then they put it back exactly the way it is, right? So they can do the same thing with the fireplace. Was there any discussion about stuff that they were gonna try and preserve? Even like some of the wood, if it's petrified, okay, let's make sure this wall gets moved in total? That was it, in terms of, because otherwise, we had the Disneyland House where you just recreate it and it looks.
Like, what's the point, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, because some of the stuff, if it's preservable, was any, anybody, did anybody look at that? And I'm just wondering if any way we can designate? I don't want to say, you gotta use thirty percent of the old materials, and then it's not, then we have termites and all kinds of stuff we discover, but.
Yeah, so the mothball plan actually documented the, all the walls and the interior and the material that it used. But to the degree how much of them that we can use or replica that will be going there, this is a very high-level discussion. We haven't gone into it, but the owner representative is here, and then they're willing to, you know, have a historian, like architect, looking at it and then document, and then to make it as.
I mean, I don't want, right, so the mothball plan, that sounds like something we need an expansion. I heard that term, so I don't know what that means, so maybe that would be the, what is that?
Right.
So if he wants to come on up and, yeah.
Right. And also, just a question, so the orientation of the, it's gonna be maintained? Or is it just, it feels weird to take these houses like objects and just start dropping them into places that they weren't originally. Are we at least gonna try to keep the orientation of possibly the house? Just so, I'm sure it was built in a way so that it captured wind and, I mean, at, when it was open, right? Or so, it feels like that's at least what we can do.
Yeah, we can include that condition into.
Okay, maybe he's nodding his head, so.
Yes, yes, we're interested, go ahead.
Evening, vice chair and commissioners. My name is Stephen Chen, I represent the ETT tonight to answer a question and explain what this resolution coming from originally. Along with the Stone Gate development, lot eighteen was this historical building is always a concern that we have. It's how we're gonna replicate or rebuild that structure. And this McComber Cabin become biggest issue just because it wasn't built to today's course, the high issue, and there's no foundation. And structurally, it's just sticking there, as long as it's not falling, and people can live in there for temporary. That's what was the intent during the time. When we tried to redesign that, we found there's a termite issue, the tree next to it is dying, and actually, the house is sitting portion of the tree roots too. So that's a multiple issue that we found is very, not just difficult, it's almost impossible to remake that house to be occupiable. So if that house stayed there or that cabin stayed there, there's almost no use for that. So that's why the staff has coming out with a, this brilliant idea to relocate that to be part of a historical piece in the park. I think that will be a very beneficial to the community and to the city too, that we can preserve that historical value to the city. Coming back to how we're gonna do that, I think, just like Claire was mentioning tonight, this is gonna be a high-level direction that we agree for that idea to move the cabin to the park as a historical piece. And how are we gonna rebuild or replicate to what extent? That will be another further study with the historical preservation architect or engineer to find out how we're gonna do that. I've been thinking about how we're gonna do that. The best way to do it is we build a box and then take out all the pieces, which is all the finishes on what we have, and just treat it as a veneer and then put it back to that box or the core and shell to be the safety effect too, just because people will like to go in there to see, you know, what's inside and touch everything else. So safety become one of the major concern too. I believe that will be the direction, and just like to what extent, to percentage, I think we'll try to keep as much as we can. Obviously, a lot of pieces there is not original anymore, just like a window was gone, there's no, it's essentially no window. It was, the window was destroyed or missing, and the previous owner just put a piece of the plywood on top of it and just painted over or something like that. So we will try our best to make it as it was created before, but to what extent, I think that will be another study. It was a report to present maybe to the planning commissioner in this meeting later on when we get to that City Council approval to get this moving forward. And we'll come back again for how we're gonna do that, how it's gonna look like, to what extent, how we can preserve and which part we cannot preserve, something like that. I think that will be a next discussion once tonight we approve or we recommend that resolution to the City Council.
So who's involved in this high-level analysis?
Could I just add really quick? Section four of the development agreement states that C E T T will construct the replica reflecting the historic features as described in the final historical sources technical report by Sappho's. So supposedly, it, the replica should reflect the most important or the most, the historic features that were pointed out in the historical report.
Which was, was that done when we designated it a historical?
It's from two thousand and four.
Okay, so even before me, okay. Because we, at one point, at one point, the planning commission, we recommended it as a historical landmark, and that was, one of the conundrums was like, oh, well, what if it's, what if we try and make him keep this and it starts falling apart? What do we do? So I guess that sounds like where we're sort of at with this one building, and this is a way to preserve that.
I did notice something that was slightly confusing to me, but I do wanna, since you mentioned the, so section three is called demolition, I wish they had named it that, should have named it like disassembly or something like that. Demolition just sounds final. Section four is the construction of a replica, but on your property. So it's being reconstructed here? And then section five is, the city's gonna pour a foundation, and then you're gonna move it over there? Seems kinda.
So let me explain this whole process. So the process will be, we will build this building, a replica, next to this building, because we do have lot nineteen or seventeen next to this lot eighteen, and it's virtually flat. So we're gonna build that building or replica before we demolish this one, because we're gonna borrow a lot of parts from here, right? It's like a building and another house.
Whatever you can.
Borrow this here as much as we can, especially for that fireplace and everything else. And then build the house over there without the foundation, and then we'll transport that to the park. And during the time, the park was starting building the foundation and infrastructure during the time. And then once the building is ready, we'll just place it on the park site. And then that will be the final historical piece that we recreate or replica to that.
Oh, okay. I was just curious whether you weren't just building it at the park?
No.
It just seems easier if you could build a replica.
Yeah, they are actually multiple, yeah, they are actually multiple issues, because once we're starting building this in the park, which is belong to the city's property, we trigger more liability and everything else. So it's better, we just build this private property, which is our property there, and then just rebuild that. Maybe we're building in sections, maybe two-section, maybe this building is two-section, which is doing two-sections. And then we transport that to the site and relocate that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just to add on that, I believe this is the win-win situation for the condition of like this one. Other than that, even if the owner decided to recreate or repair this cabin here, they won't be beneficial to the city, because that still belongs to the private property. And a lot of the residents or community won't be able to.
Right, I think it's, I think it's great that you're there, you're doing this and taking it down to somewhere where people.
And the other thing is, yeah, and then even we rebuild that one, and we cannot really use it as a livable space, just because the height and everything doesn't qualify to this today's standard. It become more like accessory building for storage or something, so it's such a waste if we don't do that, yeah.
Is anybody on this mothball, I mean, this analysis from the town? I mean, is it the historical preservation people here with the developer, I mean, who's?
So it was a recorded document back in two thousand and ten.
Right.
And I believe it was done by Heritage Resources using Sappho's Environmental's historical. Technical report from two thousand and four. That was a part of the E I R that was done for one Carter.
Right.
Okay.
No, but going forward on this project of how these, the adapter were used and how much you're gonna use, anybody from town involved in that? Is anybody, are there any?
We have only reached out to the Historical Preservation Society.
Okay.
And we haven't reached, we reached out to City Council, obviously, for this.
Because I know somebody who's really good at this kind of thing. He used to be a planning commissioner, and he has a historical house in town. And he's intimately involved in the trail, Bob Spears, so I'll just throw his name out there so that he would be.
He's got nothing else to do.
Yeah, that's right, tell him we just volunteered him again. So, no, I mean, that's just, he might have some great input, because he's done stuff where he's had to rebuild a historical house and how to like, you know, like, how are we gonna get this over here? And if you're trying to preserve as much as you can, he might have some good ideas, I don't know, I just.
Right, exactly. And I just wanna make sure, because you, I mean, honestly, that you know what you're getting into. So I mean, C E T T's saying, you know, we'll do this. And then all of a sudden, somebody comes in and says, oh, yeah, but this has to be to this level. And that level may cost a different amount of money than, you know, what you had in mind. So I think, I wish we had like a plan. I guess there is something, I wish I had it, but just to see the level of oversight on it.
Something, right?
But before, before we can demolish the structure, I think we should at least have this plan in place.
So if you'd like to discuss additions or amendments to the development agreement, we can do that and continue this to another meeting. And we can discuss with the applicant and the city attorney to see if those things are feasible.
Yeah, I think I would rather kind of table it tonight and then have maybe a bigger picture, a whole, the whole thing, all in one. Where like, this is the report that's using, this is the oversight that's gonna happen during the thing. Because basically, if we start this tonight, we're giving permission for demolition, we can't undo that, so.
Are we giving permission for demolition? I don't think so.
Are we not?
This is the first step to say that we think it's a good idea, let's explore it, they're gonna bring back more information.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, today is more like getting the first steps, like, I think this is a good idea. That's present this to City Council and then have them make their decision, say, okay, that's a good idea, let's move forward. Let's present this to City Council and then have them make their decisions, say, okay, that's a good idea, let's move forward. Then we'll come back to this public hearing again i- in front of the Planning Commissioner to discuss more in detail like how we wanna do it, to what extent. I think without today's initiative to say, okay, let's start this and then, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not vetting the whole thing completely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to this.
There's not enough information for that, yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Just wanted to volunteer Bob Spears for-
Right.
On the record.
You should do that once a meeting anyway.
He's now back from traveling, he's got a, okay. So then I guess, do we have a consensus on a recommendation?
What's the number?
Oh, it's the, the Resolution twenty-three eighteen recommending approval of the development agreement for the McComber Cabin and the First Amendment to-
So I move that we approve the Resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen, approval to move to the next step to get more detail.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it passes unanimously, very good, thank you. All right. Terrific, that was fun. All right. Moves us on to Planning Commission reports, anybody have anything to discuss?
I do not.
Claire? Ben's gonna do.
It was an amazing, crazy Halloween again and it was great. Walking around, yeah, it was awesome.
Yeah, went up on Allegri, it was a, it was a, it was a-
Yeah, it was back, it was-
It's full.
It was, it was great.
Some, some, well, I'm not gonna say, sometimes in the organized thing, you know, what's that expression? Let's organize this thing and take all the fun out of it. It, it, you know, with the volume of crowd we get, it's too bad that it couldn't be like it was twenty years ago where people walk on the street, lights, it's too safe. People get, can't get frightened as much, but it, it was a great success. I live nearby there, okay. Nothing, planning and community preservation, anything, Claire?
So next meeting, we'll have the Alverno Villa CUP coming back, continue from the October nineteenth meeting with some proposed languages amending all the conditions of approval. And then possibly a legislative update from our city attorney. Or a possible Mills Act for three twenty-seven Sierra Woods. Those are pending projects.
That's an either or, a legislative update and, so possibly three things?
Possibly.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a green and green building.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, I know that.
Okay. All right, well, then there's, well, there's something about general information, we can leave that. Bailey Canyon Proposed Residential Development. Go to thecityofsierramadre.com/ meadows, if you want more information. So all, then I guess our next meeting will be November sixteenth? Okay, I will read. Adjourn our meeting to November sixteenth, thank you.